Between the Board of Selectmen and the Park Commission on November 9th at 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 emergency outbreak, the November 9th meeting, public meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Park Commission, so we physically close to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to the facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. Backslash. As Boomerie matter, my name is Rich LaCamera. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm all members and staff anticipated on the agenda as present and can hear me. Leah Fabian?
Present.
Brian Day?
Present.
Okay, Scott, you want to open the meeting for the Park Commission?
Okay. Do I have to read that same thing?
No, I didn't fire him.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Then I will ask the members that are present. Paul Hu?
Present.
Joe Kosha? Jesse? And Secretary Nellie?
Present.
Mike Nolan is not here tonight. He was unable to make it. I do have some notes on that we can read later. Other than that, I believe everybody's here. I'm Scott Holmes. I'm the Chairman, and I'll turn it over to Rich or Leah, who's never going to run the meeting.
Leah is supposed to be running this meeting. Just one thing before Franklin apologizes. He was going to attend the meeting, but he's on vacation, and he deserves some vacation time. So he couldn't attend tonight.
Rich, is it possible for you to run the meeting? Because I'm not in. Yes, it is.
Oh, God, we're all going crazy. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda was to talk about the fiscal '21 budget. So you want to discuss it, Leah? Do you want to discuss it? Scott?
Well, I think that, here, let me put on some video here. I think that the Park Commissioners have all received the budget information. So I don't think it's a secret to anybody. We've also, you know, talked about the Warren article, but budget is kind of more your thing, Rich, so I really am going to give it over to you to talk about. I know you've met with Scott and Todd together too, so probably a little more insight.
Okay, well, we certainly don't have to tell the Park Commission they got a serious problem with their budget. It's no surprise. It's not your fault. I mean, it is what it is. We have to deal with it as best we can. And I believe that you guys got copies of the budget through October 30th, I think, everybody. And you could see the major problem. The major problem is not the expense side of the budget. The major problem is the revenue side of the budget. Up to this point, you know, you've only been able to take in $17,000, which I don't have to tell you guys. You know, that's a major problem. So in looking kind of where we are in trying to maintain, you know, your staff and to try to maintain as best we can, some of the expenses associated with running the facilities that we took $27,000 from retained earnings at the June Town Meeting and moved it into your budget, okay? And now Todd's recommendation, at least getting you through till at least the spring, the town would, the town meeting on November 30th would subsidize the Park Commission by $50,000 in their budget. And then, of course, depending upon what happens, we may have to subsidize it some more in the spring, because our goal is certainly not to cut any staff or lay people off, and there's certain expenses that we have to have. I mean, you have to have electricity. You got to have heat, you know, those type of things. And, you know, we just got to continue going along as best we can. So that's the current proposal. And I guess at this point, you got to just be, watch your expenses. And I don't want to use the term "don't spend," which you don't have to, but you can't do extra stuff right now, you know, so that would be a concern. So that's the story.
The only thing I can add is that at Special Town Meeting, it would probably be helpful if at least one representative from the parks can be there in case anybody has questions about the budget. I mean, I mean about the parks budget. They can hear it from the Selectmen, but I think sometimes coming from the Parks Commissioners too, it might be, you know, in case someone has questions at the special.
That's a Monday night?
November 30th at 7:00, yeah.
I should give it to you.
Okay, thank you. So any conversation, any discussion, any comments? I mean, I know it's difficult, you know. What else? I don't know what else we could do right now.
Just to add to what you said, we have been and obviously will continue to toe the line as far as expenses. Just whatever we have to spend to keep the buildings up keeping, that's what we've been doing and will continue to do that.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything or?
Think this is it all?
Well, I wish it was better. We're hoping still, we're hoping still that the, after January 1st, that the CARES money can be used for, to replace revenue. And if that was the case, then we can take that revenue that we get from the CARES fund and use it to supplement the Park Commission's budget. So hopefully that'll happen. But as you know, there's a lot of unknowns out there right now.
Right, right. No, that would be fantastic if it does happen, but.
Is there a question for Scott or anybody in the Commission? Just so folks at home understand just how impacted you've been by this, like this time last year roughly, do you know where you were at?
I don't have it in front of me, but I would dare to say we're what, how many four months in? I would dare to say we would have probably somewhere in the vicinity of easily $40,000 to $50,000 of revenue.
Wow.
October has become the new April as far as weddings. We were booked solid from September through October into November. We even had some weddings on Mondays and Thursdays booked.
Wow.
It would have been probably over the top as far as that time, this timeframe. I'm just, you know, taking, taking a third of our projected budget and saying $40,000 to $50,000. So, yeah.
Chairman Holmes? There was about $50,000 we had in revenue by this time last year.
Yep, that was my guess.
Well, Nellie.
Thank you, Nellie.
Nellie knows everything.
She's great.
My computer knows everything.
All right, anything else you want to bring up on the budget, you know? Let's just say that budget season for fiscal '22 is coming up, and we'll be getting ready to, to send out that probably in December, and then we'll probably start the discussions in January-ish. So a new year, 2021's coming. So we'll just take it from there, and I'm sure there may be some things we need to talk about, but at least hopefully we'll move forward in the right direction. So that's the way it is. Anybody else on that budget side? Okay, just two things I want to bring up, you know, while we're all together. As you know, the town head has and what still is, was committed to hiring a foreman besides the maintenance person, the laborer that we commonly have there, not the maintenance person, the laborer. And Franklin has asked us to take a different approach. And what we're going to do, what he's recommended to do, is to take our current foreman for the Highway Department and make him responsible for both the park and the highway, and at the same time, hire a new equipment and laborer for the Park Department, okay? So we're going to commit it to doing that, and we're still committed to doing that. So you'll have the same amount of resources and the same staff available, but that person would report to the foreman of the Highway/Park Commission, Park Department, excuse me. Anybody have any questions on that? And the reason why we're doing this, eight months, we've tried, we've had this job posted, and we can't get anybody to apply, the people who've applied, excuse me, with the right qualifications, and we're just not going to hire anybody. You know, we want to make sure that the person that we hire has the right qualifications, including CDL license and equipment operator, you know, and so forth, which is required, you know, to do some of the things at the Park Department. So that's the approach he wants to take, and that's what we're going to do. If anybody else has any concerns about that. That position, that position is budgeted in the Highway Department right now. So I mean, it's not like the money's not available. It is available, and we're going to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Whatever we got to do.
Okay. The other thing was that we know that we need a new mower, you know, for the, the park, you know, it's where he's struggling to keep things together, having to do with parts and stuff like that. And so we're going to get a mower that's specifically going to be used, you know, for the Park Department, okay, down at the, down at the fields. He currently uses the Highway mowers for John Pond now. So this mower will be dedicated, you know, to just be used at the, at the Ted Williams Camp. So at the town meeting, we are going to be appropriating from town funds, okay, not your funds, $22,000 to buy a new mower, okay? We need it because we can't, we're struggling once again to keep these things together. And this is a much more efficient, faster mower. And Franklyn, he thinks this would be the best thing. Probably use two, but right now we're just going to get one.
And that was the situation, you know, Mike was spending a chunk of his time fixing and keeping things running. And, you know, had we not had to spend $47,000 to supplement our budget, that would have been one of the items that we were going to try to buy before, you know, this conversation took a different direction.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else before we get to the Loon Pond Lodge Agreement that any members of the Selectmen or the Park Commission want to talk about? Or are we okay for now? Because we're going to have a long discussion after the first three years about where we're going, where you're going, and what you want to be, you know? Because there's going to be issues here that we have to figure out, so.
Yep, nothing today.
Okay, it's not that far away. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to talk about the Loon Pond Lodge Agreement. Lillian, you want to, Lillian, Lillian, you want to take this? Or you want me to start this off?
I can, I can pick this up.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so after much conversation with many people, we decided that we were going to extend the Loon Pond Lodge contract through December with SEM, and that's where we're at right now. So this brings us to sort of a, you know, a new decision to make if we want to try to extend the contract again, or if we want to, like, start all over again, do an RFP and go, go that way. Again, we may be making different decisions if it wasn't for COVID-19, but almost everyone I've spoken with, and I don't want to speak for anybody, everyone, I'm not, you know, it's my sense that everyone is more comfortable just sort of, you know, staying the course with SEM. We know what they're giving us. A couple people have suggested that, you know, can the contract be changed? So I think, Rich, Mr. Chair, we found, we asked council, and they said a couple of things could be changed, not everything, but so if some of the parks folks want to weigh in on the, whether they want, you know, what, which direction they'd like to go. I mean, I don't think it does us any good to extend the contract by three months while we're waiting to see what happens with COVID. I think that if we're going to extend the contract, that it should be for a longer time. But again, you know, I think this is a conversation that we need to have with the Park Commissioners, and then the Board of Selectmen needs to sit down and sort of, you know, at, once we hear what everyone says, decide which direction we're going to go. And Bill Fuller did offer to join the meeting, but who is the owner of SEM, but I, you know, I figured that it's probably just best for us to just talk, the Board of Selectmen with the Park Commissioners, just, just to talk just us right now. So if anyone wants to weigh in on how, you know, they feel, what direction they think we should be going, if we should just try to extend the contract, or if we should just, you know, try to just go for a new RFP and start all over again.
Obviously, well, again, I mean, we extended to, ended, to the end of the year. We thought it'd be best to get on a yearly cycle. I know, which is what you were agreeing to as well, but the problem is we, we, the idea was, we voted on several months ago at the Park Commission to go the RFP route. We do the contract. There were some holes or some gaps. We saw in it when we spoke to the Selectmen, the same thing. We noticed some things we, we want to change, revise, what have you. And then, you know, my opinion is competition is good. Let's get this out for quotes to see what else is out there. Not say anything bad about the current situation, whoever's doing it, no problems there. But once again, let's put it out there, amend the contract and go that route. To a point, Leah, we find ourselves at the end of the year, yeah, extending to three months, is that really going to do anything? But the idea was to revise the contract. We didn't like some things that were in there. So is that something that can be done in the short term? I don't know how quickly we can do it. We've been working on it for four or five months. We haven't gone very far. So I don't know where we stand on this. And I guess I, I didn't hear what the other commissioners say and maybe the Selectmen say. But again, we haven't moved on it. We know some changes we want to make in the contract. Where do we go from here?
Rich, do you know what we can and can't change in the contract before it becomes something that we have to do for a new RFP?
You want mute?
Hit that on purpose, you know, I was muted.
I was, I, I was going to say, I don't think I was on mute.
I can't answer that question directly, you know. I know that there was some, well, there were some concerns about, you know, performance, which was an issue for sure. That certainly can be addressed. The financial part, I know there was discussion about the charge that they're charging us, you know, whether that's too much or we need it at all. This is a question. I mean, I'm not saying we do or we don't. But I know there's, there's certain things in there specifically about the reporting. I know we were all concerned about some of the reporting. I know that can be addressed, you know, for sure, because the reporting that we have been getting, both the Park Commission and the town, has not been adequate enough. I know that we were, we were concerned about some of the issues having to do, you know, with the liquor license, you know, as well. So, you know, some of those things, you know, can be addressed, you know, too. I mean, actually, the liquor license is coming up for renewal in December effective January 1st, so we definitely can address any issues associated with the liquor license. That's not a problem. That's for sure. Okay? So I don't know what other, I know there's, I don't, I don't have the agreement here in front of me.
I mean, I don't know if we can change, like, the percentage on the, you know, anything like that, or even if we would want to. But I sort of look at this timing from kind of like a unique point of view. I know Rich is the way, but I hope he can still hear me. Okay, so here's, here's where I'm at on timing. So right now, we don't really have anything being actively booked at the Loon Pond Lodge. So even if we go without a contract while we're waiting for an RFP, I don't see that we're losing, you know, we may lose just like the beginning, let's say, of a reopening, but there's not much going on right now anyways. But if someone has a correction to that, please, please let me know. I, I.
I do, I do. It's Nellie. The only thing that would be missing in between while we don't have events and we do have 2021 becoming fully booked at this point, is the interim speaking to those renters, tours of the building for 2022 and onward, that sort of communication, which is all done via SEM.
Okay, I guess, and I'm not looking to delay by like six months. Like if we started an RFP tomorrow, let's say, you know, it would have to, it would take a few days to advertise, whatever. So, you know, I wouldn't.
Don't take that lightly.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, but.
It won't take a few days.
No, but it should not take us six months to do, you know, I guess that's what I'm saying. The only thing I do worry about is who's going to be bidding on a contract right now when no one knows when, you know, anyone will be able to have a proper function, you know? So that's, that, and that is the difficulty right now. But honestly, this time I really will be quiet and let the other Park Commissioners speak.
Right, I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
That's okay. Last time, it did take us quite a bit of time to get the RFP together, and then with back and forth, you know, sending it to legal and coming back, and then ironing out the contract. We met weekly. It went to legal, back and forth, Billy's side, our side, and then it finally went to the Selectmen, and they made changes after everything was agreed upon. But it did take probably close to six months in the grand scheme of things. It's not something that's going to be done in a short amount of time. I mean, you're talking about redoing the whole contract and then putting it out to bid. You've got to wait for bids to come back. It took a long time last time. Personally, I think if we could make the minimum changes that we can make, and everybody's happy with it, that we could, you know, redo this contract or extend it for a year to get through where we are. That's my personal opinion. I know I was part of that RFP and then part of the contract, and it took a long time and a lot of hours. And I'm not going to have the time coming January 1st to be doing this. My job takes me from January 1st to April 15th. And as we all know, last year, April 15th turned into July 15th. But anyhow, it'll mean other people will have to step up and put in considerable amount of hours to make this work. That's my feeling.
Okay, can I, can I just, I have the contract with the proposed discussion and changes that I think everybody agreed to. First of all, if we were going to extend this contract, do we extend this contract to November 1st of next year, which is the yearly, not the three months, but the yearly one? Because that's what we have to do. Because this, if this contract is staying in place with modifications, then it has to be November 1st to October 31st, okay? We can't change the, the term of the contract because we're going to use the extension of the existing contract. So if that's what you want to do with the changes, okay? We can do that. Is that the approach we want to take?
I was going to throw in two cents if it's okay, sir. I was under the impression the last time that we had met that everybody was on board with the idea of going out to RFP and getting some competition and having an opportunity to go back and to some of Mr. Koski's points, rewrite some of the parts of the contract that would perhaps entertain a bit more performance-based operation. Is there, has there been any turning point where we feel potentially modifying the existing contract is in our better interest? Is it now that we just see that events might not happen for a long time? I mean, we're still bleeding money every month, or we're not really having any events?
I guess the only thing I'd say, I agree with Scott, okay? There's no way this is going to be done by December 31st now. This isn't going to happen. By the time you advertise it, you know, you get the proposals back, you review the proposals, you get the contracts back. I mean, can we do it by the end of January? It's possible? You know, we could do that, but right now, it's not because of the, the requirements for the RFP, the advertising and so forth and so on. It's just not going to be done by December 31st.
I mean, I, I don't think it's going to take as long as it did the first time, Scott, because we have a better sense of what we're looking for this time. I think the first time it was trying to figure out, figure the whole thing out. So I think we see what we have, and I think when we go to do it, we have a better sense of this is where we need to, you know, we need a little more record-keeping, a little bit more, you know, reporting. And so I don't think it's going to take us as long as it did the first time. But, you know, again, my point is that we don't really have much going on. So even if it goes through to January, we're not, you know, not really, unless the rules change significantly and we can have proper functions again, I don't see that we're losing a lot if it goes through to January. So I would be okay either way here. I could go either way, extending the contract or doing the RFP. I really could. That's why it was important for me to hear from the Park Commissioners.
Aside from the elements Nellie mentioned a few minutes ago, where 2022 bookings would be in question for tours and such, are there a number of events the current company is hosting between now and January, February?
No.
I'm checking January, February. As of right now, they are not hosting anything through the end of the year. Everything has been postponed or canceled.
So is there a point having anybody on contract right now?
There is. We still get a number of voicemail messages to which I hand over to SEM to handle in terms of people still wanting to book their events at our venue and our current bookings who are a little bit unnerved about what's going on, asking for updates on the regulations and if they can still have their event and such. People still planning like they're going to be able to hit the date appropriately. So they are reaching out to SEM on a consistent basis for this information.
I guess where my mind was going and reel me back in is is this something that, given the less the lesser amount of activity going on right now, is this is this amount of activity something the town can handle for the time being? While we go through an RFP process? I mean, if it's mostly phone calls and questions, are we getting our money's worth?
I have a question for Nellie. Have we received a bill from since June?
No.
They haven't billed us?
No.
They're they're currently coming in and doing tours, answering the phone, contacting people, and we haven't been billed since June.
Correct.
It's great to hear, but they could turn around and do it.
Yep.
Could have eight bills tomorrow. I hope not.
I I I hope not. I hope not.
It has the amount of work lessened, of course, because there are no events that they're actually sitting and and handling. There are no people that they're talking to where their date is coming up a week. And so they're they're booking everything and making sure all the timelines work and such. And SEM has been great with the ladies where they're there at the event, especially for weddings, to make sure the bride knows when to go down and here are your flowers and stuff. They they act as the wedding coordinator when they really, the renters should be hiring one. So in this aspect, they're making sure that those renters feel good about renting with us by answering their questions, postponing postponing as needed and giving them timely information. Unfortunately, I'll be quite honest, if the contract ended in December 31st and we were still working on an RFP through the end of January, I could not field the amount of calls and messages they receive. But I'm only part-time. So if you had somebody full-time who would want, you know, to have that, I I could see that working. But it is it is quite amount of work.
I I don't. I think we're we've all sort of talked about our options, but I don't know if anyone's ready to like make a vote. Maybe that's what we do. We go right to a vote on what everyone wants to do unless, you know.
I'll give my two cents worth because, yeah, this could go on for days and days. Obviously, I think we we're looking at some type of extension beyond December. It's not realistic by December. We all agree with that there. Nellie can't handle the calls here. So what if we extended it to which is point to the end of October 2021? And then in the meantime, redo a contract and and you know, shame on us for not getting it done the last six months, whatever. It's beyond us now. We'll look at getting a new contract and getting everything out middle of next year. And by October, November 1st, 2021, we'll be awarded to whoever the best bidder is or whatever, but go for that route. So extend it for a year and then do the RFP, the the quote revision in that timeframe. That'd be my thought.
Yeah, I I mean, that that is kind of, you know, to me, I think it's the best option. But again, because of the lack of activity right now, if we're ever going to do an RFP, this would be, I think, you know, that that's the only thing that I'm really, you know, thinking of, but.
Nellie said there's been a lot of activity, so.
Okay.
I mean, right, Nellie? For for 2021?
In terms of calls and messages, yes. People who have postponed, who are nervous, and people who are still just trying to book an event. They are still looking at to booking it for 2021, yes.
For 2021, but there must be some for 2022, correct?
Absolutely. Weddings now typically go two years out. So absolutely.
Do we still get an RFP together for the cleaning, though? Didn't we vote to split that out?
Well, that's going to be a separate issue. We're going to have to talk about that. We don't have a contract, so we have to worry about that. We're just going to figure out how to do it.
I have a question. If we extend the contract, does the monthly fee remain the same?
Well, I think that's probably the most questionable item on our changes, Paula. You know, because we agreed to a contract that says you're going to get X. And I don't think we can eliminate that out of the contract right now.
But but they we they can't charge us more because when we extend the contract, is that correct?
That's possible, yes. We we could make sure that that didn't happen. Where is that? What section is that?
The amount we're paying SEM and and the work that they're doing approximates what it was costing the board to run it ourselves with our own employees, not including time spent by board members to come in and clean at 1 o'clock in the morning. Just a little FYI. It's not that we're paying a whole heck of a lot more because we're paying it to SEM. We had an employee that worked 20 hours a week that was getting a decent rate of pay. Plus, we had to have staff at every function.
I guess my my hesitation right now, that fee. Go ahead, Scott, finish your thought.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, my hesitation right now is that fee as it's structured took all of those elements that you've outlined into consideration where some of those don't exist right now.
Correct. I mean, I would just say overall, the, you know, Paula was asking about the cost of the contract. And and it was it was, it did approximate what we were paying. Probably the contract was less when you factor in volunteer hours by some of the board members to be down there cleaning at 1 o'clock in the morning. If my.
That's great history. It's good to know how it came about.
In my opinion on this has always been, I've been leaning towards the extension and because of COVID, I don't think it's a great time to try to get RFPs. I mean, even last time before COVID, when I understand SEM was the only bidder, am I correct on that? You know, I I just don't think now is a good time to try to get bids for that reason. And I I think we prepared in advance, we could do the RFP before the expiration next time and and hopefully we could find a couple bidders and work out better.
We don't forget, that was three years ago. I'd find it hard, no, we wouldn't get more than one bidder. I don't want to put on that pedestal. Well, we only got one last time. Now, you know, I don't be gun shy of RFPs. I think people are looking for businesses. I think it's a lot of opportunities out there for people. I'm not saying SEM is not good, not saying anything about them, but it's again, competition is good. Maybe we didn't send a big enough net to get more quotes or proposals, but I think it's certainly something that's in the best interest of the town and us if we do get competition to it out there. Maybe it is better, maybe not, but.
Right. The only the only thing I can say, though, as far as, you know, the Board of Selectmen, which at the time would have been myself as the chair and and Rich, was that we did, we did start this pretty early. We were talking about it early and then the pandemic hit. So it's almost like we would be on that. We started talking about this like in February because we knew the contract was coming up and we had a, you know, I had worked on a timeline with Tracy and the town administrator so that we would be, you know, we had a good timeline. And the reason we did get derailed was because we just didn't know what direction COVID was, you know. It just feels like we're going to be doing the same thing if we do another RFP on a similar timeline. So if that's the, you know, I I could certainly see us extending the contract. And like you said, Joe, jumping into that timeline and getting it, you know, and getting it going so that way we can, you know, see and and gosh, I I hope things are different this time next year.
Well, the bottom line here is is that they make their money on the bar, period. Okay, so that bar contract is where they make their money. Okay, not uncharging the management fee. Now, we can talk to them about the management fee because they're really not providing us full service right now because they can't come and work in our building. You know, they really shouldn't be in our building or doing tours, but whatever. So, I mean, we can talk about that if that's what you want to do. But if I could very quickly, you know, just talk about the areas that we all talked about and what's been put into a draft, you know, contract. And, you know, Joe Karshia had brought up, it says we need to do a better job describing the property and exactly what the management company could use. We can clearly just change that contract to define that. That's not a problem. And then it talks about town use. We can make sure that they know, you know, that we don't have to get into this big discussion of when there's an election. We know when the elections are and they just can't use the facilities for that election. We also, you know, talk about, you know, functions, town sponge functions. We should make way to make that decision with the park commission as to what those town functions are. So that can be bona fide because that doesn't affect anything financially, having to do with these contracts. The Mike Nolan had said, would like to see more detail, large contract versus bar contract. There's going to be two different contracts, okay? The bar contract is going to be the one that we're going to do coming in December, no matter what, because we have to do that with the license agreement. And then we have, you know, this agreement, the lodge agreement. So that is definitely going to happen separately. It shouldn't have been put it together previously.
But I think separate.
Not now, they're not. They weren't. Pardon me?
I I think with two different parties.
Yes, they are. But they, according to the contract, they they weren't. And now we have to have separate contracts, which we're going to do. Okay, so there's no issue on that. And then we can establish anything we want, you know, as far as what that contract would be. We could say, okay, instead of getting 20% of the bar, we can get 25%. I'm just talking out loud here. Whatever that happens to be, you know, we could do that. And before I forget, one of the things that we do have to straighten out is the the caterers. You know, according to their contract, we're supposed to get 20%, and we have not been getting 20%. And we have to fix that, okay? That needs to be fixed, you know, right away. Nothing to do with them. But for some reason, the caterers, whoever they are, I know who they are, you know, have said, well, we're only going to give 18%. I don't know who agreed to that. The selectmen, the park commission, whatever, but it got lost here, you know, in the shuffle. So that needs to be fixed. Then the management fee, I said, you know, we could probably try to negotiate something, the management fee at least the same or less than what we're paying because they're not providing the same services. That we can probably do.
I mean, Rich, I have talked to Bill Fuller, who, again, owns an TM, and he's very willing to, you know, work with us and, you know, I think he just is trying to, you know, plan his own business for the future. So again, I think we we've extended the contract by 30 days. I think we owe it to him, you know, to to give him a longer extension, not, let's just say, you know, three to six months. I think that Joe's idea of a year is probably a good, you know, that gives us a good place to, you know, that gives him some 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 ability to do some planning and that gives us to the ability to work through the new RFP.
But, you know, Leah, we had been talking about this for months, so.
Oh, I know we have. I know.
We should have already done it, you know, whether, we don't, we don't, I'm not picking on them, you know. We don't owe them anything. We have a contract here. And we're going to extend the contract to go through an RFP. So in fairness to all of us, you know. So the other thing Mike Nolan brought up, which I know was brought up by Joe and Leah, you know, the reporting, you know, they got to provide us better reporting because the reporting they provided to us, you know, is on 90 days, it should be 30 days and what that is, that can be fixed. Okay, the bar service already talked about elections, where he talked about. Mike Dolan would like to see a safe serve requirement added here. Should be done anyways. It's the state of Massachusetts is a requirement by the state that they they have safe serve licenses that at least people that are working there have the safe surf licenses. So that that's not a problem either.
I I believe all the caterers do.
They have to, Scott, yeah.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.
Corey checks. I don't know how this was left out, but absolutely anybody that works in that building should have a Corey check. Absolutely, especially the bar attending service. So that we can fix for sure. The quote-unquote famous cleaning custodian service. I don't know. We got to figure that one out because right now we have nobody, you know, that's doing it. So I don't know who's going to do that, you know. I mean, we're using a company supposedly, that company has no contract, you know, with the town at all, and they're supposed to be. And for some reason, that wasn't done a long, long time ago, and I don't know why. So that that's going to have, that's a separate contract. There's nothing to do with this contract. It's a separate contract. What else we got here? There is some discussion in the contract about repairs and maintenance. I think it needs to be more specific. And I think we can expand upon that, that if there's damage done in the building, they need to repair it and so forth and so on. So that can be changed. The the liability insurance, shame on us. You know, we should have made sure that was done. You know, the town administrator should have made sure that we had that. We didn't. And so that's our fault. When we sign the contract, we should make sure we have the insurance and then make sure that it's followed up on on a yearly basis to make sure it's updated. Joe Karshia had recommended something about termination having to do with contract that the manager is convicted of a crime or a felony. Hopefully, we do the Corey checks. We won't find that, but that's certainly going to be put in a new contract. And Jesse and Paula brought up the, perhaps that we should, we should ask for a waiver fee because of COVID-19 for the the monthly management fee. That was about it. So that's the best I could do off the top of my head. So what do you want to do?
I don't know. Do we want the parks to make a suggestion or do, does the Board of Selectmen want to go right to making a decision here?
Well, I'd like to do what the park commission wants to do. I mean, you know, I don't want the the Board of Selectmen to say, well, you know, you got to do this. I think this is a joint decision together.
Yeah, I agree. I've never run a park before. They know their business much better than I do.
Nellie does. Nellie knows the ball, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So then I guess it's up to the park commission to discuss and give us an answer and then we can make our own motion or decision, I guess.
Don't all jump at once now.
I've made a decision. Does that matter? I don't, I want to extend the the contract till next October, as you've suggested, and but with some modifications.
Okay.
A second.
A second.
Especially in, in terms of fees. If the building's not being used, why are we paying that much?
Okay.
So I think I heard Jesse second that motion. Was that a motion, Paula?
It is.
And then that was you, Jesse, right?
Me, just.
Okay, can I um. Uh, Paula, you made that motion. I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. That uh, we extend the existing contract to December 31st, September 31st, I wish it was, October 31st, 2021. And that we got out for an RFP, uh, no later than July 1st of 2021.
Question on that one. I know in the contract, there's a fee. It's gradual, first year, 3,320, 3,400. If we extend it, what's the fee going to be? Which year are we going to go with?
I don't know, Joe. We'll have to figure that out. I, I don't think, I think what we need to do, I think, and the guy's directly from wrong. That we need to negotiate the fee with them and say, hey, listen, you know. Here we are, you know, we're already. But we already been eight months into COVID-19, and we paid you all the way from March through June. Okay, and I know they haven't charged us up to this point for the four months, but. We gotta come to some agreement and say, okay, what's a reasonable fee? For now, until whatever, until the state of emergency is over, which is not going to be over anytime soon.
Right, then maybe we put um, this motion, a timeframe on it, where if we can't come to an agreement with SEM within. I don't know, 30 days on an agreement? Then we go right to RFP.
Well, I don't even want to wait 30 days. I mean. We gotta get this thing done.
Right. I just don't want to spend a month trying to negotiate a fee, you know, and then have no. You know, have no decision still. And then, you know, I would just say, we, we give it a certain amount of time to make a decision. To come to an agreement, and then if we don't come to an agreement, then we go immediately to. And we can, I can work on an RFP in the meantime while we're trying to negotiate.
Okay, I, I would say that that decision should be made by the end of the week.
The decision.
What's the hangup?
What, for the negotiation?
Sure.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
What's the big deal? I mean, either he wants to extend the contract or he doesn't. You know, that's number one. You want to extend it? Okay, these are our conditions.
Yep.
I'm assuming they, I'm assuming they are, but is SEM already aware of some of the changes we're hoping to incorporate next time around? Nothing would be a big surprise.
I have discussed most of them, you know, but I've also suggested that, you know, um. All these meetings have been public, so you know, I have made the, 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 the suggestion that, you know. A lot of what we're talking about is public record. So if um, you know, the owner wants to be in the know. We've talked about it a few times publicly, so.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, I don't think it's that difficult, Leah. You know, we've already put together in a, in a draft contract that basically said this, that I talked about. And uh, we can summarize, you can summarize this to him and say, we'd like to do this, 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 and that.
Yep.
That's it.
Yep. No, the only. Which my only hesitation with the end of this week is, you know, today and tomorrow, I, I'm. Believe it or not, in the middle of a family event right this second, so I'm out all day tomorrow too, so I just, you know, I mean, you can work on it. It doesn't have to be me.
No, 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 no. This isn't, another thing's not being passed on to me. I got enough to do.
No, I probably need a couple more days, that's all.
Fine, you just tell me when, so we get a decision from them, that's all. But I'm not going to wait till the end of December. I'm not going to wait till the end of November.
Um, so I, you know, if we want to put literally a week from. Tomorrow, that's, I would be fine with that. And in the meantime, we, we know what we're looking for. We can put it, we can put together a whole new, you know, RFP. And, you know, again, I know the calls are coming in, but I.
There's no sense putting an RFP together. I don't want to say waste everybody's time unless we're going to do that. So I wouldn't do that until. We get a decision by next Wednesday, because then we'd have plenty of time in the spring to put the RFP together.
Yep, but then we have no one that's going to be answering the phone for. That's the only thing. And again, I don't know how much. Because we won't have them working, correct, after December 31st?
If we don't get a contract together.
Right, okay. Okay, yeah, next, by next Tuesday, that gives me an extra, you know, I won't start on this till Wednesday, so.
Uh, would it be okay if we made the town council? Available to park commission, just to give it a quick one through, make sure there's anything else the 12 of us haven't already noticed?
Would like that.
As far as reviewing the existing contract, Brian?
Uh, the existing languages is the changes we may be proposing, and help us tighten it up if we need to. As long as it's something they could do in this short timeframe we're talking about.
Well, the only, the only question that I would have is that, you know, there's no sense having town council. You know, review these changes in contracts unless we have the uh, them agree to the proposed changes, even though they're not finalized.
That'd be fine, if we wanted to get the uh, verbal agreement, and then from there have a review done. Because you're right, otherwise, if there's no agreement, why bother?
Is there somebody from the park commission, Scott, that wants to work with Leah on this agreement to finalize it, then bring it back to the park commission?
Is there anyone?
I'll do it.
Okay, Paula.
Paula?
Yes.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
All right, so uh, the park commission, I think, has a motion on the floor. And I think you need a vote there, Scott.
Okay, we gotta review this motion here, because it's been um. Changed and. Modified.
I don't even know how I'm going to note this one.
I, I know, I, I've kind of lost, lost where the motion is.
So I think the motion is this, to extend the contract through October 31st. With SEM. With. 2021. With um, changes to be negotiated. And if uh, we can't come to an agreement by Tuesday. Then we will um. I think we could start the RFP process.
I believe Rich's amendment was to begin the RP process next year, so that we're ready for the end of the extension. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so we have that motion. Did we have a second?
A second.
So any further discussion on the part of the parks? Paula?
No.
No?
Just one quick one. I know we, the reason we extended this one here is we wanted to get to year end and be on a year thing. We go to October 31st next year. I, you know, are we going to push out to December, or are we just keep it not at the end of the, at the calendar year? You know?
Um, I, I, I believe. I believe as Rich has stated, that we have to stay within the parameters of the current contract if we're just doing an extension. If we were to put out an RFP, we could then change the dates to coincide with the year end and the. Uh, alcohol license and all that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm on a sec.
Okay. Uh, Joe, Paula, okay, um. Then uh, we'll take a roll call vote by the Parks Department. Paula Hul, how do you vote?
A.
That's affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, Jesse Medford?
Aye.
Joe Kasha?
Aye.
Scott Holmes, aye.
Hey, the board of selectmen want to make a motion?
Uh, can I make that same motion?
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, aye. Okay, now we can go watch the Patriots.
There you go.
What is it playing this year?
Not really.
Oh, well.
Nellie.
Okay.
What was that, Leah? I love your new do. Thank you.
I'm doing this. Scott, you want to call this?
Scott, make a motion to adjourn, will you?
To make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:04 PM?
Second it.
All those in favor? Jesse?
Aye.
Uh, Joe?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Scott, aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Brian, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the board of selectmen at 8:04 PM.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
They are.
Uh, the camera, aye. Good night, everybody.